I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Motion? Okay. I make a motion that Paul Faye be made acting chairman for the special meeting and committee of the whole workshop of the President and Village Board to be held this evening, January 12th, 2015.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Faye?
Yes.
Trustee Liam?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. This will be the time for public comments. There are no public comments, so we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
That's our motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Faye?
Yes.
Trustee Liam?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Crash Champions. We're seeking a motion to continue the public hearing regarding a stormwater variance for the Crash Champions Auto Body Shop to February 2nd.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Faye?
Yes.
Trustee Liam?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the special meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.
I call the committee of the whole workshop to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bonucci? Trustee Faye? Trustee Liam?
Here.
Trustee Peck?
Here.
Trustee Rassage?
Here.
Mayor Collins? We're seeking a motion to approve the committee of the work -- committee of the whole workshop minutes, held on November 24th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Presidential comments?
I just have one. I had a resident call me today inquiring about snow removal near the Pace Bus Terminal, that when there's snow of any amount, people are walking on the street. If we could look into a portion of sidewalk being cleared, I understand the cars for -- the passengers are now parking all the way down Van Dyke, so if we could look into that. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Faye, I go by that area often, and what this -- this past weekend, what has occurred with the excessive wind blowing off this empty field to the west is producing an awful lot of difficulties. I see the village often goes up and down the sidewalks with that Mr. Person's -- what's the name of that machine with the brush on it? I don't know, the snow evacuator.
Trackless.
Okay, fine. But I find that they had an awful lot of difficulty just keeping up with it. Everybody is making a severe effort, but the wind that was blowing out of the west so severely produced all of those difficulties. Thank you.
There are no trustee comments, this will be the time for public comments. There are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is 241-03 West Lockport Street, facade grant request.
My name is Pat McEwen. I'd like to thank Mayor Collins and the board for letting me talk tonight. I've been in the downtown for probably about forty years, and I was -- had a business down there for twenty-eight. Was a record tape and video shop called Sound Investment. I was never so happy as when they renovated the downtown, made the streets wider, had eateries right out on the street. And just recently, two pieces of property got sold that have been vacant for quite some time, and that's the Raylock Building and the property at 59 and Lockport Street. So it's good to see those back. We've got a new eatery in the old 600 block that just opened, and just recently, last June, I purchased with my wife the courtyard. And we kind of took a turn in our life and decided we wanted to invest a little more into the downtown as opposed to just the two buildings that we had. We first tried to get painters to paint the building, and that was -- that was a job, because it was a big job, and a lot of painters didn't want to mess with the metal roof up there. I finally got Tim Fear from Fear Construction. It took them approximately thirty days to do, and it turned out very, very nice, as you can see in your pictures that I provided for you. In the TIF, I looked through my taxes, and I pay approximately eleven to twelve thousand dollars every year in TIF. And what I'm here tonight to ask you folks is if now I could get a little bit of that back by applying for -- I've already paid for the painting job, but when there is money available, if I could get on the list in order to receive some kind of monies from the TIF. I want to beautify our building just like you did the downtown, and again, I thank you for your time to let me talk tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Michael, what was the amount of the facade grant given to this property?
Yes, I did have an opportunity to review that. In 2004, 2005, the village approved, authorized expenditure of one hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the original and recent facade grant. That included over ninety thousand dollars for the facade grant, and the balance of that was also for architectural fees.
Have we had other properties come back and make another request, even under different ownership?
The only property that comes to mind that where they asked for another, what I call bite the apple, so to speak, with regards to facade grants, is the old bakery. The Olsen's did require -- request a new awnings. I think that was approved by the board, I want to say, last year, or maybe a year and a half ago. And but it was a very limited amount for the awnings itself. That's the only case I know where an applicant has had two opportunities for the same building for facade grants.
Thank you.
Also, just as a policy, just for the record, historically, we've not basically reimbursed people for retroactively, so in other words, when the work is actually already been completed without actually applying for a facade grant, generally, we've also advised people that at that point, they don't really qualify.
Yeah, it's kind of explicit in the document, if I remember right. The other thing is, we've not really approved maintenance, which is maybe the doing things over again, but once it's been done, maintenance is left up to the homeowner, because we're providing fifty percent of the upfront money. It sounds like we provided quite a bit on this building to begin with. So.
I can tell you that we've had other applicants as well that have made submissions that we have, as staff, directed that they would not receive requests. And to back up a little bit on the story, this was a very big issue for the village board shortly after I was hired. There were some concerns that some properties had received more than one consideration, and that the village board had some rather strong consternation that after having lifted the cap on how much money could be received, that we were beginning to see multiple requests. And so the board at that time directed myself and staff that buildings would get one opportunity to -- for a grant, and that the grant was unlimited in what it would be. The cap was still lifted off of it, however, you would only get one chance at taking that. So again, we've expressed that to some other property owners as well. I might as well add that that was a conversation that we had as well with some other businesses outside the corporate limits of the TIF that were seeking sales tax recapture for some investments that they were required to make as part of their corporate reimagining, and they had previously received a tax capture, and that was the direction that we gave them, was they already had received tax funds from the village for a previous refresh, and that weren't going to participate. So we have, over the past five years, a rather strong record of maintaining a single refresh or investment on a property.
If I could make a couple comments in regard to this. You know, I really feel strongly, Mr. McEwen, what you're doing is, you know, admirable. But the difficulty lies in the fact that this property, and other people have expressed it also, that you have -- this property has received in the past one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And I was, in my tenure on this board in the last ten years, I have seen a history where we have deliberately said, trustees have said, "One grant per property," and hopefully we'll have kept that as a continuum. You say you pay taxes, you know, I'm not intending to be cruel or anything, I pay taxes also. No one improves my home, no one improves anything. I can't expect the public to pay for situations that I purchase. What I'm saying is, you purchased property that needed repair. There's a term called caveat emptor, let the buyer beware. Perhaps, I'm not going to get into your specifics.
I realize.
No, no, I'm not getting into your specifics, Patrick, but the idea is, I don't know if you received a discount on the sale of property in order to make the change to bring it up to grade. But yet, like I'm saying, I feel that one donation, one TIF grant per property is what this board has used as a guideline, and I think we should continue with that. And so I'm saying what I would vote against an allotment as you asked for. And like I say, I wish we could do something different, but yet, a precedent has already been established in the past, and it could come back to really haunt this board in our inactivity and our inaction in the wrong direction. Thank you.
I appreciate your consideration.
No problem.
I don't want to beat you up for coming to the -- making the request, but this is a policy.
All I meant before is, not that I pay taxes, but I pay into TIF. That portion of the -- of that TIF comes out of taxes, is all. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Vista Point South subdivision.
Yes, thank you. This matter is coming before the village board this evening on a concept. As you recall, Vista Point was entitled back in 2005. This -- the applicant is now coming before the board in looking for some input on a proposal concept. As you recall, this property is located on Walker Road, just south of Walker Road, and located to the east of Ridge Road. As my staff report has outlined, the applicant is coming before you this evening. You have a land plan in your packet with a concept, is proposing specifically four hundred and eighty-five units. The applicant and their attorney is actually here this evening to walk you through the plan and answer any questions that you may have. But very briefly, I want to just provide a brief summary. Again, the applicant's proposing four hundred and eighty-five units, specifically two hundred and fourteen single-family units and two hundred and seventy-one townhomes, with a proposed density of four point two five units per acre. The original annexation agreement, which was approved by the village board in 2005, based on entitlements of this overall project, including the over three hundred acres to the north, commonly known as Vista Point, was originally approved for five hundred and fifteen units, which included two hundred and sixteen single-family homes and two hundred and ninety-nine townhomes, with a density of four point five units an acre. The actual two hundred and sixteen single-family homes, which were approved back in 2005, didn't incorporate our duplexes with regards to twelve thousand square foot lots with duplexes. The applicant is coming for you this evening with a variation of the plan itself, directing your attention to the actual screen here, and they're proposing, again, as I've outlined, two hundred and fourteen single-family homes and approximately a little more than six thousand square foot lots. So the question before you this evening is, is we have an entitled project with a certain said density, the applicant is looking for your direction of whether it would be support for slightly smaller lots, but instead of duplexes, they would be proposing single-family homes in lieu of the originally conceptual duplexes, which were originally identified in the concept plan, which was attached to the annexation agreement, which was approved in 2005. I have a matrix in my staff report, which again compares what the applicant's proposing this evening with what's been -- what was originally entitled back in 2005. Staff's outline in our staff report, some concerns about the overall lot sizes. Historically, as you know, the village board has had some hesitation about smaller lots as it relates to six thousand square foot lots, and has been looking for more of a diversity of lot sizes. But again, one must consider the context of this overall entitlements. This project is already entitled, based on the original southwestern expansion plan, and I've attached that to my staff report for your review and consideration. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions the board may have, and Mr. Philip Chuck is actually here, representing the applicant.
Couple of comments, Michael. One, you've got -- I listed five. Bullet, I'm sorry, I turned it off because I was coughing, but it's -- there are five bullet points that you express concern on one smaller block network with traffic circles, you know, some approved traffic flow, so there's some improvements that could be done there. About the north-south neighborhood, collectors should be aligned, landscape islands, there's a number of things which you are suggesting be considered in the plan, and I don't see them there. The one thing which I was looking for, I didn't see any evidence of whatsoever as a single-family design standards being adhered to. Those words don't appear in this document.
Well, again, the applicant, I think they can provide some illumination. They have -- they have made it quite clear that they will comply with all the residential design guidelines that the village has adopted, specifically the village's single-family design standards. I think the real question before the board this evening, and you're absolutely correct, there are a couple of bullet points, there are some design issues that if there is support for this concept plan, that the staff will continue to work with the applicant on refining the land plan. And I think there are some opportunities to refine the land plan. But the biggest fundamental question that's really before the village board is, again, I think at the end of the day, is what's being proposed as it relates to the number of single-family lot sizes. This is, again, all six thousand square foot lots, or slightly larger than six thousand square foot lots. I think that's really where the applicant's looking for some input as a balance of trading off the original duplexes which were being proposed. So I think that, you know, obviously, staff will continue to work with the applicant on refining the plan if there's support for the lot sizes within this development.
I encourage you to continue to work with them on it. I guess there's no elevations or anything proposed here either, so we don't -- somewhere in here that talks about half of the houses are going to have garages facing the street on a small lot, that's going to make a -- not a very attractive streetscape, in my opinion. So I guess I'd like to see further evolution of the idea, and hopefully improve some of those things, in addition to the points that you've raised. Smaller lots, per se, are not a major concern. You don't have to be twelve thousand feet, in my mind.
Okay.
Six thousand is on the low side, particularly if you've got, you know, a lot of garages, stores, and all that sort of stuff. It's not going to be a very attractive development. Is this originally the Grand Park South?
No, this is actually originally Vista Point. This is just for context, this project was originally entitled in 2005 by Weisman Hughes. And unfortunately, Weisman Hughes did not pursue this transaction or this development, and the developer did buy this. And as you'll recall, they, you know, Vista Point came back, was revised again by Weisman Hughes. The three hundred acres to the north of this parcel right here, and Mr. Shoppe is actually here, perhaps to walk you through this, but this was entitled, the area north of Walker Road, for single-family homes and townhomes, with the original density of two point, I think, two point three eight, three eight units an acre. That's the property to the north. That was entitled back in 2005. The property we're talking here, no actual preliminary plat or final plat was ever actually approved by the village board. That's why the applicant's coming before you again this evening with a slightly revision to what was entitled, based on their concept plan, looking for some input on whether the board's comfortable, generally, with the number of single-family homes, with the density with the lot sizes, before they continue to refine the plan. And I take your point in consideration with regards to, obviously, looking at, you know, ultimate design of the single-family homes and also townhomes. That will come back before the village board for further approval and review at some later point. I guess the applicant's actually here this evening, again, looking for general input on whether the density that they're proposing is within the ballpark of something the board would be comfortable with.
Well, from my point of view, I think the density's a little bit higher. I think, without seeing more details, I'd be uncomfortable with a density as high as it is. I think it needs to be more attractive, from a personal point of view. Yeah, the other thing is, somewhere in here it mentions townhomes. We've approved a number of townhomes, as I recall, somewhere in here, we say, "Well, maybe townhomes aren't viable right now. We're busy approving them, and yet we're saying we're not -- the market's not there." So I'm not sure what the story is on that. I guess I'd like some more information before we say the density in townhomes makes any sense here. There may be market information that suggests that's not the way to go, if it's single-family homes, I would make them somewhat -- put them somewhat bigger lots and make them -- make sure they're very attractive.
Well, I think Mr. Philip Chuck and Mr. Shoppe perhaps could address that specific issue, because I think that, again, that's a fair point about the number of townhomes being proposed. Obviously, one thing in lieu of the smaller lots would be more townhomes. I'm not sure the board would be more comfortable with that, or more importantly, whether the market would -- could support that. But Mr. Shoppe and Mr. Philip Chuck are here to maybe address some of the challenges they have as it relates to their land plan, so.
Michael, before Mr. Philip Chuck comes to the podium, you mentioned in the southwestern plan something called, let me find the word, modified grid? Can you speak to that?
Well, I think the one thing that staff is being proposed, and I don't think anybody's proposing a grid, just for the record, staff is clearly not supporting a grid in this area, because with the exception of downtown Plainfield, Plainfield generally not -- doesn't have a grid system, and I don't think anybody wants a grid system. What staff basically has consistently proposed is just better street interconnections, so where streets have more interconnections, so there's more opportunities to get through the neighborhood with more interconnections, just simply better interconnections, in lieu of doing cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets, just better interconnection. So for the record, I think that's what staff was referring to. And this applicant's overall plan has a fairly good interconnected street network. I think there's some opportunities to continue to refine the plan, as outlined in my staff report, but they do have a fairly good interconnected street layout. You don't see cul-de-sacs. Cul-de-sacs have a number of -- I know people do generally like cul-de-sacs, but they have a number of maintenance challenges for public works, snow plowing, and I think we're trying to move away from a lot of cul-de-sacs in the village, just for long-term maintenance and capital improvements.
Mr. Philip Chuck?
John? Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is John Philip Chuck. I'm an attorney with offices in 111 East Jefferson Avenue in Naperville, Illinois. I'm here this evening with Mr. Tom Small from TMJ Investments, and Mike Shoppe, as was mentioned. You may recall that Tom and his group were the developers of Grand Park in -- here in Plainfield, and we recently were before the board, and you gave us a preliminary approval on the Comble property across from Springbank. Well, as the market, you know, turned, Mike Shoppe and I both worked on the Vista Point development for the Weisman Hughes organization, and came up with the plan that you see there on the left, that was approved via an annexation agreement with the village of Plainfield. They weren't able to hold the property, and ultimately, TMJ Investments has acquired it. And we're only looking at a small portion of the overall Vista Point subdivision at this time. We're looking at that portion of it, south of Walker Road. It's currently entitled for the townhomes, as Michael spoke, and duplexes. And actually, you've got twelve thousand square foot lots, so you've got basically a unit on six thousand square feet. And the question really is, would the village board consider modifying that plan? Townhomes basically stay the same, but instead of having the duplex units on here, we'd go to a detached, single-family product. Thus, we split the difference between the twelve thousand square feet for two units to six thousand square feet for one unit and six for the other unit. So, but overall, to your point, density is lower. We're not proposing as many units as what is entitled on the property now. So with that, I guess I'll let Mr. Shoppe come up and give you more details about what the thought process was in the design and what we're attempting to do, unless you have any particular questions for me before I sit down. But that's the -- that's what we're looking for, some input from the village board, because we just felt that maybe the board might be more inclined to look at a detached, single-family product rather than the duplex product that's currently approved for the property. And to Michael Gergen's point, yes. The idea here is if you would give us a go-ahead on the concept, is that, you know, eventually, before a developer comes in and is able to get preliminary plan and plat approval, they have to show you product, and I know that's what you want to see. And we made the same statements to you when we did the Comble, that, you know, they'd be coming in with the product, so you'd be able to see exactly what would be going on the site. It's just that we don't have it at this time. We're trying to see if we could modify the entitlement, and if so, then we'd move forward to the next step. So with that, I'll have Mr. Shoppe address you. Thank you.
Good evening. I know John and Michael have both given a good explanation. There's a few other points that I'll just -- I'll add to both of their presentations, give you an explanation of some of the -- some additional thinking that we've got. As John mentioned, the Comble property, our objective here is similar to that. We're looking, in this case, to re-entitle it, because it's already been annexed, but it's really a function of trying to anticipate where that market's going to go, and have these properties in a position where we're ready for the market as we continue to recover. And the research that we're doing is telling us that duplexes really aren't in the market, and they're not going to be in the market for quite some time in the future. The trend seems to be more towards that single-family product. We're starting to see that activity, as you've continued to see it here in Plainfield. But that's our objective, is to re-entitle it, to make it more market-ready. The lot sizes, they're actually about sixty-eight hundred square feet, and John went through the math on that, but there's something also important to consider, and that's the setbacks that I think we can work with that are different from what the entitled setbacks are. I think, as Michael stated in his report, the current entitlement with those duplexes is a twenty-foot front yard, a twenty-foot rear yard, and seven-foot side yards. Okay? Now, that's the entitlement they've got. But again, we're thinking, you know, if it's a single-family product, we can work very well, as you've seen in town, with a twenty-five-foot front yard setback, a twenty-five-foot rear yard setback, and then on the sides, even a ten-foot going, increasing that setback to a ten-foot side yard. Okay? So we have essentially larger setbacks, single-family homes versus duplex homes, and we do want to move forward to go to a preliminary plan and document all this, but Michael gave us some good guidance that said, "These are some important design criteria that really affect how we would put that preliminary plan together," which is going to take a lot more time than working with Michael. And that's why we've come to you to seek your input, as Michael put it very well, about three key components that would go into that preliminary plan: the density, any general comments on the layouts, and of course, the lot sizes. With input on that, that'll give us the information that we need to take it to the next step and come back with some more refined plans. Of the comments, those five bullet points that Michael has outlined, I don't think we have any problems with those. We want to research it some more and work more with Michael, but on the surface, I think we can look into those and come up with a solution to that. So we've also met with the Park District, we've gotten some general input from the Park District, we've met with the School District, as you know, they're a neighbor to the east, they've got a large holding there, and their thought is still to hold that piece of property for a high school someday. It won't be anytime soon, but that's their planning, and that's It won't be anytime soon, but that's their, that's their planning, and that's good. They've decided, as a result of that, they would not, they would not care for any land to come off of this property as part of the land cash obligations. They will just take cash. They're, they've already got a site plan for the high school laid out. There's no need for road interconnects or anything like that. So they are going to stay pretty much autonomous to our development. And the park district, they identified a, a need for a neighborhood park, a five-acre park. Uh, they're on board with the general location of it there. So we've gotten their input. Now, if we can get the input from the board, I think we'll be in good shape to come back and prepare a preliminary plan and bring it back before you. So with that, that, those are, that's the input really on the lot sizes and the density that we're looking for tonight. That'd be very helpful for us.
I think the, uh, I think the density is a little extreme. Uh, I agree with Mr. Lamb that, uh, 6,000 is a rather extreme jump from 12,000 square foot. I would be very interested in seeing some, uh, design guidelines or, or prototypes of the product that you plan on building. Um, I'm looking at the southwest plan, the village southwest plan, and I'm looking at a house, uh, by Mary Ann Cusado, New Economy House. Are you familiar with that?
No.
That's the website, neweconomyhouse.com, and it shows a, a separate detached garage in the rear. And we, I think the board is, uh, long had a concern about snout houses. Is that something you would consider?
Uh, you know, not being familiar with it, we'd have to do some more research into it. But what we, what we can say, um, you know, we had worked with Michael on the single-family design guidelines when we were working on the Comble property. So we're familiar with those design standards, and we have every intention of complying with those architectural standards that you've already got in place. I don't know if that, the, the product that you're referring to, if that dovetails with those standards or not.
It's just one of many that I, I saw, and I, I thought the detached garage toward the back of the house, so it's not predominate, or dominating the facade. And, uh, we talk about other things in here like front, um, front porches on houses, white picket fence, that sort of thing. But the, uh, the overall density, I, I can't support.
Just, again, just to familiarize yourself, the current entitlement has a density of 4.5 units per acre on the property, and what we're proposing is lower than that. It's 4.25 units per acre. So there is a, a proposed reduction in the number of units.
What, what is, is that the density of the single families?
No, the, this property, all of this property, well, I should say, all of this property right here, the current entitlement is 4.5 units per acre. That's a combination of the townhomes and the single family. The density on this plan, again, the combination of townhomes and single families, 4.25. It's, I think it's about 30 units less. This, our proposal today is about 30 units less than the original entitlement.
What, what is the, what is the acreage of, uh, park space?
Uh, five, that's a, that's a five-acre park.
And what about the unit on the north?
The townhome cluster to the north of that?
A large green area on the left, upper left.
This area?
No.
That's somebody's house.
Oh, I think the, the property north, Vista Point.
Vista Point, up north of Walker.
North of Vista, yeah.
All that.
Yeah.
Okay, this was intended to be a school site. It was combined, uh, planned in the, in the school district vision back then, a combined elementary and middle school site.
In my recollection, it was, I think it was a 10-acre park. I think Mike, refresh my memory, but when we approved that school, wasn't there a 10-acre park site adjacent to the school? It was a combined park site, right?
Yeah, if you recall, it, this was, it was annexed with this plan in '05. But in 2008, this part of the project from Walker North had a preliminary plan brought through and approved. Now, the preliminary plan was just a little bit different than what you see here in that there was a, a 10-acre park that was going to go to the park district, and the balance of this land, which is about just short of 40 acres, was going to go to the, uh, to the school district.
Would you ever consider conservation design?
Uh, yeah. I've done a number of projects in town, and, um, there's some elements in the plan here that you see, uh, that come from that, that line of thinking, the, the little pocket parts, making more public space of some extra land that's not large enough for a lot. We could certainly incorporate that or think about that.
What's the development in Geneva on Randall Road?
Mill Creek.
Mill Creek.
I think you're looking at Mill Creek.
Are you familiar with Mill Creek?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would, I, I think we as a village really should, uh, move more in that direction. Instead of channelizing stormwater, for example, use the natural bioswales and that sort of thing. And if you said you've done it with other developments.
Usually a byproduct of that process is that, um, th- there's greater amounts of land set aside for open space for, for different types of drainage techniques, et cetera. But that's not at the expense of, uh, of the unit count that might traditionally come off of that.
No, I understand, I understand that.
So, so the trade-off usually nets that with some more open space being set aside for, for drainage improvements or e- just open space, the lot size is smaller. That's, that's one of the fundamental concepts behind conservation design. Generally, it leads to a smaller actual lot that's marketed, but more open space.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. Oh, sorry, Jim.
No, please, go ahead. You were talking.
Um, anyway, I, I'd look forward to seeing a preliminary, um, you know, to, to move forward, take a look and see what products that, you know, may be offered. As trustee Lamb had said, I'm not committing to supporting those, but I would like to see what kind of materials, what the townhomes are going to look like, the elevations and everything, before I would, uh, commit one way or another. Um, and one question for staff might be for, uh, Mr. Gergen or Mr. Murphy. Um, since the original annexation was in 2005, I know you had mentioned that they would be subject to newer, um, building guidelines and policies. Will they be subject and held then to the latest and greatest ones that this board has adopted?
Yes.
Without board giving direction or negotiating, no matter what happens, if this board moves forward and says, let's go ahead and, um, accept the proposal, they will have to build within the newest guidelines that we've approved regardless.
Yes, any change to what was, is entitled will, will require the applicant to basically incorporate in the, in the plan development, all the village's design guidelines. It'll be attached to the plan development, so any future builder who comes in here will have to come back to the board again, and the board will have an opportunity to make sure that their product is consistent with any and every guidelines or, to the direct even future guidelines that are adopted in the future by the board. But clearly, they'll have to comply with the design standards that the board approved last year and the residential design standards. Um, and just for the record, there is an actual pattern book for the 300 acres to the north, which is fairly, very comprehensive and, you know, I'll be honest, very restrictive. Um, so there's also some added protection with regard to the property to the north because there is a pattern book for this overall plan unit development in addition to our adopted design guidelines.
Okay, well, that addresses several concerns I had, so I do look forward to seeing, you know, you guys come forward again in the future.
I should maybe clarify what we were thinking in terms of process that ties into the architectural. Actually, it's, it's the same process that we followed last spring when we brought the Comble property forward, forward to board's approval. Um, TMJ Investments are a developer, not home builder. And we know the importance of having the board take a look and approve the architecture. As we've done with Comble, we have now approved preliminary plan, but there wasn't any, we didn't bring you any architecture. We didn't show you a, a pattern book for the Comble property. But the protection, of course, that the village has is that we agreed that when a builder does come along, they will go through that approval process with you and present their architecture. For your review and approval. And that's, that's what we'd be envisioning here as well, is that we certainly don't want to side, or miss any steps. We just want to bring that information forward, forward to you when we have it, and that would be at a time when we actually have a builder. It worked out very well for us, hopefully with the village, when we did the Comble property, and we're hoping to follow the same process, frankly.
So if I understand you correctly, sir, you're asking for this board then to approve these changes without actually seeing the materials and the found, and the elevations of the homes that you would then bring to, later to us and ask for us to approve with the builders, is what you're saying?
Tonight, oh, we're, we're asking for your input, not approval, but input on a couple of very important. Design considerations. That's the lot sizes and the density. With that, we're going to go back and prepare more detailed plans. Then we'll bring those plans to you and ask for your approval, uh, on those plans. But just as we did with the Comble property, we wouldn't be bringing you architectural samples because we're not the home builder. But what we would be doing as part of the re-entitlement of this is making a commitment to you that that product that would be built would be consistent with your design standards, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Shoppey, uh, you had, uh, just stated you wanted input on lot size and density. Well, uh, my input would be, I'm totally against this entire concept of, uh, what the density is and what the lot sizes are. Uh, I, I know that, you know, what I empathize, empathize with your predicament. Uh, number one is you had initial improvement in, uh, 2005. Ten years have gone by, it's 2015 right now. Uh, what you had initially presented, and I could see when, you know, when the Village of Plainfield was, uh, growing, uh, we were in, uh, in the quest of paying for an awful lot, and we needed impact fees. That isn't the situation anymore. The Village of Plainfield is financially, uh, sound. It doesn't need the impact fee. And so what I'm saying is, as a trustee and as a, a member of this particular board, we can be very particular as to what we can select. Uh, I unfortunately view this, uh, particular project as, and I look at the, uh, different situations that have been written up in our report, uh, presented by our planning department. The staff's biggest concern today is the proliferation of 40-foot product. Garage is taking up 50% of the front elevations, et cetera, et cetera. What I'm saying is, I do not want the Joel Field look, Joliet Plainfield look that proliferates on South, um, Caton Farm Road. I expect to see something that's really dynamic, and that what you're presenting, I cannot see anything dynamic in it unless we really see some very, uh, forward-thinking projects in the future, housing, design books, et cetera, et cetera. But in order to just get a giant subdivision that looks like it was, uh, uh, some, uh, city in Southern California that exploded overnight, and they call them little boxes, I'm not going to approve it, and, uh, I'd really like to see you, when you, if you do come back, really bring something that is very dynamic, because what you're presenting today, I don't see it. In addition to that, one last thing, I think our population is aging. I don't know if it's aging properly. Uh, but however, it's, it appears that the applicant is not identifying the proposed concept that either age-targeted or for an age-restricted market. I think, uh, what I'm seeing and hearing is nothing but what is in south of Plainfield, and I don't want to see that in Plainfield. Thank you.
If I could respond?
Surely.
Obviously, we've been before the board a number of times. We, we clearly, really are on the same.
Sir, can you state your name, please?
Tom Small, with TMJ Investments. We understand what the board was, we want what the village wants. This is somewhat unique, and this ground is already entitled. The village, a number of years ago, annexed this with a pre-annexation agreement at that time because of the issues with. Trying to clarify the borders with Juliet. And what, really what we were asking for was, there was a duplex that was approved here for 200-some duplexes. We thought, and actually I thought, it has to be a no-brainer when you go in with lots and product that are being approved in town now. The same ones that are being approved in Grand Park would be the same product that would go here. And not trying to diminish the quality or the price of the product, this is just, we thought the board might really like to see single-family lots instead of duplexes. Helps break up that row of garages, what you get on a duplex, and we think we can do a better job. So we're not here to try to get that kind of zoning. The density is there. You've granted it for whatever reasons many years ago. And we just thought that you would prefer to see single-family lots other than duplexes. If that's the wrong assumption, that's what we're here to find out. If you'd rather see duplexes, I guess we could come in today and say, here's the plan for 200 duplexes, we want to build them.
Tom, I, I think the impression that I'm hearing from the village board is that they're comfortable with you approaching this from a single-family home lot perspective, just not at 6,000 square feet. I think that's the impression that, uh, is, is being given by the board. So if you'd like to revisit this, uh, uh, as a single-family lot development, the board would be more than happy to consider that, but, uh, 6,000 square feet is not a starting point.
I, I, I'd like to ask the question, I, is there a, a lot size? I mean, I, I just, I'm just thinking about what's, what's going up in our Grand Park product now. Is this product, this lot size? I, I, I have to believe if it's good enough for Grand Park and good enough for across the street, it would've been good enough for here. But if 6,800 square feet is too small, is there a minimum that you could give us some direction on?
From my, from my perspective, I would say about, uh, at 8,000 square feet. I, I don't, I won't support a seven-foot side, uh, lot either.
Neither. I, we didn't ask for it, I agree.
Couple summers ago, we were in a drought, and, uh, one of our residences caught on fire, uh, south of the village. And it was so windy that a, a house about 40 feet away almost caught fire as well, and the fire department was tending to that house as well as the house that burned. I think we need to be very cautious about side yard setbacks and with, because of fire, the potential for fire.
The one thing that staff did, um, identify in, in, in our staff report is would there be any support to re-entitle the overall project? Not only this, what you're looking at this evening, but also, um, 300 acres to the north. As you recall, all the single-family homes on the property to the north were all 10,000 and 12,000 square foot lots, which are pretty good-sized lots. Would there be an opportunity to slightly diminish those lot sizes and to increase these lot sizes so there's more diversity? So there's eights and nines and tens in the overall project, which would give the applicant an opportunity to have more diversity of product, um, which again is something that staffs promote it continually.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, that, I would think that makes some sense. I think we're going in the right direction. Uh, you asked whether the improvement and setbacks is, uh, good. I think that's 20-foot, 25-foot instead of 20, and, you know, back and all that. It's definitely going in the right direction, but you keep making the point that you're not the builders. And, uh, a builder comes in and says, I got 6,000, sub-thousand square foot lot. I can't put the house on there that you want. What I like to do is see the linkage between what a, a good builder wants to put on there, that'll actually work. And that's the reason I'm looking for, you know, elevations and so on.
We're driven by the market and, and.
I understand.
That 40-foot wide product is, seems to be the, that's what people are building today.
Well, that's, that's maybe not so much a plain.
It's decent product, I, I, you know, it's.
I think we could.
I could, if I could, if I could, you raised a good point. I, I think potentially, we could do a better job on this product, this whole project, if we almost took it from scratch again, with certain, these are the densities we got in, in the original annexation agreement, and maybe took a clean slate to see if we could do a better job overall.
I would certainly support that, and you've been part of our, uh, comprehensive plan discussions, uh, and you know the kind of things we're trying to do. We're trying to make it better, and starting from scratch is probably a good way to go. I mean, you say you were entitled, yeah, you're entitled, but you don't want to put up what you're entitled to do. What you want to do is use that as a starting point. Well, let's go back and try to create the kind of community that we want, the kind of houses that we want. They don't necessarily be in big lots if you, and Michael, remember earlier, uh, London, Dwayne London?
Dwayne London.
Yeah, he kept saying, yeah, I put a great house on a 5,000 square foot lot. And, you know, you, you can indeed. So it can be done, but let's work through with more details, get to the point what we want to build on there is actually buildable. That's my concern. You say, well, we've got this approved, you've got to put a house on that. Well, you know, we may not like the house that's there. But if you've got something, this is the kind of product we want to put on there. It requires 8,000, 7,500 square feet, whatever it is, and let's make sure we got that, and then maneuver through the whole area, redirect it all possibly. I mean, 10 years ago, things were entirely different. I first joined the board almost 10 years ago, and it was an entirely different world. We were approving, you know, major projects everywhere. Uh, were we smart then? Not necessarily. We know a whole lot more now than we did then. The market's a little bit more refined. Uh, you know, we're not looking to build masses. We don't have hordes of people coming in. We're looking to obviously expand, and we are. But let's expand in a way that, uh, you know, works for all of us, and the product is quite important. So I'd tie in with builders what makes sense. If you'd build them in Grand Park, then let's take a look at what's there and. If you'd build them in Grand Park, then let's take a look at what's there and see, because it fits there, it should fit here too, but let's make sure we know what is. And fifty percent garages facing on forty-foot lots is probably not going to be attractive, in my opinion, but you can show up with more information and we can see. But the concept of, you're going in the right direction, I don't know whether it's a sufficient input for you tonight or not. There's more work to be done on your part as well as ours, and hopefully let's work together and make something happen.
That's why we came here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rassich, you did make a comment about our last point, I was wondering if you had a comment about.
And if we look at opening up the entire development, the parcel to the north also, I know you were strongly against what we were proposing here on the south side, but how do you feel about looking at it as a clean slate, sort of?
Mr. Philip Tuck, I did have a final comment, but that, it wasn't on that particular subject. And you people were leaving, and I said, well, I'll spare everybody the whole litany of sorrow here, but it's not a litany. But what I was going to say is, you know, in, I used the word previously, empathize with you. Development is difficult, you're putting money forward, you're trying to get something done. Unfortunately, we are not in opposition, we're in trying to do what is right. You're trying to get a, a saleable product, you're trying to move forward with the development. I'm trying to say what is best for the Village of Plainfield. You know, I was going to enclosure, one of Mr. Fay's favorite words on my part, enclosure. I said, you should work with our planning department. Try and come up with something that is workable, something that is developable. And there's nothing wrong with trying to do that. I was perhaps harsh initially, but yet I have, I feel very strongly that I do not want to see a community when, that is, that looks like some communities in some areas. I don't want that look. I want Plainfield to be its absolute best. And I know you're trying to put in a good product, we've got good land, we've got great schools, we've got great park districts, et cetera, et cetera. We should get the best development for the best community. And so I'm saying, I think you should just work with our planning department, work with this board, and move forward in that particular fashion. I'm not saying, you know, I would, I am, I got everything cut and granite, that's absolutely not true. I'm relatively resilient.
Stop, stop, stop. Thank you, Mr. Philip Tuck.
Okay, anyway, thanks a lot. That was my final comment.
The next item on the agenda is Streets Division 2015, 2016 fiscal year budget.
Thank you very much. Before I turn this over to Mr. Persons and to Mrs. Plekum, I wanted to kick off our discussions for the upcoming proposed fiscal year budget. Tonight is the first of a series of conversations that we hope to have regarding the corporate accounts. We'll also then close out our conversation in February with regard to the enterprise funds and, and capital funds, which are more of a recap from our previous conversations that we took place in the fall. Our hope is that we'll have the public hearing and a vote on the budget in March, I say March sixteenth in particular, which proves to be a challenge for Mrs. Plekum, but she's up to the challenge for us nevertheless. How we thought we'd go about our presentations on the corporate account is that what you will see before you is a continuation of our current practices, for the most part. All the departments have budgets that represent a continuation of our current practices. However, we thought it would be worthwhile to continue our conversations with the village board with regard to future growth and whether or not we should take a look at how we best could go forward. That's not saying that we're proposing additional staff, we aren't at this point. What we're doing instead is giving instead options by department, by department, as to where they see the priorities in the future in their department. And if and when the time comes that we have revenues that can match up against those potential other options, we wanted to get your feedback on those before we move too far forward. So tonight, Mr. Persons is going to do that with the Streets Department, and we look forward to getting kind of your feedback on those items that he has. We kind of refer to them internally as our I chart, you know, do you prefer A or do you prefer B? When, in some cases, there's a C, and of course, the last option always is, well, just leave it the way that it is. And we fully anticipate those kinds of discussions, but wanted to start it there. Lastly, then, when we reach the end, after all the departments have had their conversation, then I plan on having a conversation with the board as to, across each department, are there priorities that rise higher than others, so that, again, as we're planning these, future growth potential, we can be ready and able to move. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Persons.
Thank you very much for that introduction here, and what we're going to talk a little bit tonight is about the overall operations of the department. I'm going to move very quickly through the slides, it's more for the benefit of the public than the board. The board is keenly aware of the operations of the department, but I think it's important to bring out some things related to the services that we provide and we provide in-house, things that are contracted out that could be potentially expanded in the future, and then new technology that is out there that has saved the village money, not only in electrical costs, but also in labor costs too as well. So first, we have the mission statement, this is on our website, I'm not going to read it word for word. We do strive to provide the highest level of services, service to our residents and to our businesses out there, and to protect the health and welfare of our residents out there. And that's a core mission of the, of the village, this is posted at Public Works, and the employees are keenly aware of this, and they take their jobs very seriously. Over the years, the village has grown, we talked a little bit about ten years ago and the development and the growth. If we go way back, even a little bit further, back in 1996, we were only about seven thousand people as far as population was concerned, but we actually had two-point-five employees per thousand residents within Public Works. And back then, the technology was different, the meter reading process was a lot more labor-intensive, there were other processes that were a lot more labor-intensive, in that as time went on and we started to grow and expand, we didn't necessarily hire people based on the population growth, but hired people based on the needs within the department and within the community. Incorporating other new technologies too helped reduce the amount of labor that was needed and increased the efficiency level. So from this time until 2004, we went from two-point-five employees per thousand resident down to point-eight employees per thousand residents within Public Works. This is kind of a breakdown of where we've been at and a couple of milestones along the way. In 1996, we had a total of eighteen employees within Public Works. In nineteen, in 2009, we had a total of forty-two, that was kind of at the height of the growth of the village. We were installing a lot of new water meters, dealing with a lot of new subdivision issues as far as inspections and things like that. And we actually had to make an adjustment in the size of our crew, and the, and the board is aware of that, but for the benefit of the public, we did tighten our belts back when the economy went through a rough spot, and it wasn't easy on any of us, but as Trustee Rassich has stated, the village's finances are sound and we have a good plan for the future. So our current number, total number of employees within Public Works is currently thirty-two. Some of the cost-saving message, methods really revolve around a couple of different areas. Vehicle maintenance, our, our three mechanics, it's actually two mechanics and a supervisor take care of over a hundred vehicles, including the police department vehicles. This saves money not only in the, in the fact that they can complete the work cheaper than the dealership could, but also the convenience that the officers can bring the vehicles across the street directly to the garage, have the work completed, or schedule the work to be completed, and then the vehicle can be returned. It saves time in having to drive across town and having diagnosed and then rescheduled and different things like that. So our mechanics, they not only do an outstanding job, but they do save money for the village overall. Trustee Fay had brought up the fact about gas prices and things like that, we typically pay fifty cents to a dollar cheaper than what you see on the pump, so buying gasoline in bulk does save the village money. And I'll let the board know what our last bill was when I get it. It should be low. I know I mentioned that when we moved into the Public Works facility ten years ago, gas was a dollar a gallon for us, and those were some good days.
It was so them can remember what it was.
Ten cents a gallon. I can remember even eight cents, actually.
Moving on, moving on, what did you think?
Oh, sorry.
One of, one of the other areas, the street light and maintenance program, there's been a huge demand out there within the community to promptly repair the streetlights without, within the community. We had over six hundred different work requests that were completed in the past years. We do have two individuals that have the electrical certifications to do the work, and they also do an outstanding job. We have over a hundred new LED street lighting, and that, streetlights going in, and that was before the board. We would like to continue and expand that program in the future. And this, this is a program that's been very popular in-house and has saved the village money too as well. The street sign production, well, we've kept this in-house since we've moved into the new facility, we brought it in-house. It continues to save the village money, there's new retro reflectivity standards coming here soon, and there'll be more attention to signs, but there's a huge benefit of being able to install signs on a timely basis, especially with the number of signs that, that do get knocked down that need to be replaced quite quickly. So we're pleased with that program. The, the property maintenance, we actually have, of course, Settlers Park, the downtown, the wastewater treatment plant, the lake water pumping station, many other public rights of way that we take care of out there. And the way that we have addressed this, and we've expanded this in the past, is that during the summer, we hire approximately ten usually college-age students that work here for the summer, they're seasonal part-time employees, and they help out with the, with the lawn maintenance. One of the advantages is, is that we get a good group of workers in here to assist with the, with the full-time employees, it saves the village money, it gives the college kids an opportunity to have a good part-time job for the summer. One of the disadvantages is that we get them in groups in May and then we lose them in August, and that the, the maintenance crew, the field maintenance crew, grounds maintenance crew actually goes from a number, we have ten part-time employees plus two full, two full-time employees, in late August, it goes back to two full-time employees. And they cover all of the ground maintenance things within, items within the village, and when they need help, which is a couple of times out of the week, they have to pull employees that are working on streetlight maintenance, tree removal, sidewalk maintenance, and things like that, just so they can cover the grounds maintenance that's needed at that time that we don't have the part-time seasonal employees there. But the part-time seasonal employees are great helpful. We intend to continue this program and in fact, potentially expand this program to include additional engineering interns, and I'll get into that just briefly here in a minute. Street maintenance is an ongoing issue, you'll see a little bump in last year's budget where it did go up quite a bit, and it was directly related to the cold temperatures that we had last winter and the potholes that needed to be patched, and then the patching that needed to occur. So you'll see a bump in last year in contractual services as far as snow removal, salt purchase, overtime, and basically street maintenance too as well. But it's very important to have a core group to take care of street maintenance work. Of course, we plan to continue a, the multimillion-dollar street resurfacing and maintenance program, patching program, curb program, and sidewalk program, that that would be contracted out and be competitively bid in the future too, as we've done for many years. The snow removal, this is a popular issue here in the past week, it was pretty quiet until I mentioned how quiet it was, and that's what Mr. Murphy was going to say. And we did have a challenging week this past week, but the employees responded very well. Keep in mind that about half of the snow removal work that we do is actually contracted out. We competitively bid this each year, we award that to usually multiple contractors, we have three contractors this year, and they assist the village staff in completing snow removal. That is more typical these days than it was in the past, and I can tell you that there's still some other communities in the area that they take care of all the snow removal services in-house, they don't contract any of the snow removal services, and that we see that as a potential challenge, just based on the fact that the number of events really averaged that fifteen to twenty and not the thirty-five events that we had last year. And if you look at the long-term trend, it's difficult for me in the village and the position that we're at, we do have four hundred lane miles of roadway, to justify purchasing enough trucks and hiring enough people to cover that four hundred lane miles regardless of what comes. So we have contracted, we've contracted out for at least twenty-five years assistance for snow removal, and we would anticipate that that would continue too as well.
Just a quick question on the percentage that's contracted out on a normal year, fifteen percent, forty percent?
Yeah, just, just about fifty percent, because it was more like a forty-sixty split, but based on the routes that are broken up in each individual area, they're basically about forty-mile routes throughout the community. Just about half of the routes are covered by outside contractors, we take care of the rest, we have an outside contractor that takes care of the downtown area too as well. And we found that to be pretty cost-effective over time.
When you say roughly fifty-fifty dollars, that's the mileage, the dollars roughly the same? We keep track internally too, so.
Well, the dollars are interesting because we have calculated this by hour before in the past. If you were to have winter like we had last winter every year and you could guarantee it, I could justify hiring additional people and buying additional equipment, but you'd still be at that point where you'd still contract out a certain amount of work too as well. The challenge is keeping that equipment active for the entire year that is non-snow-removal time of the year. So if you're going to invest a hundred and sixty thousand dollars into a two-and-a-half-ton truck with all the equipment for eleven or twelve or fifteen events out of the year, we better have a plan to utilize that piece of equipment during the summer. And so at, at this point, that fifty percent, fifty percent actually works pretty well. We keep the equipment busy, we keep the employees busy throughout the year, it's a challenge for them too as well. The guys like it when they're busy, they like a challenge, and it just makes more sense to contract that out when needed. You'll look at the year before that, and I'll finish this with this part, look at the year prior to 2013, 2012, there's a huge drop in contractual services because it was a very mild winter, and that was a, a cost-savings winter for the village.
I could look it up here. What's our total snow removal budget that includes contractors as well as our people?
Yeah, Tracy can get into the numbers. I can quote the contractual services as three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is approximately what we budget in there, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand per salt, we share the salt too as well, and Tracy can quote the other numbers towards the end too as well, unless you'd like to quote those numbers.
I mean, that's primarily the salt and the snow removal costs that Alan had mentioned. On the staffing side, for street maintenance, it's roughly seven-hundred thousand dollars for staffing purposes, but then the overtime is budgeted at eighty thousand. Now, last year's huge snow events brought that overtime budget up significantly to about a hundred and sixty-six thousand. So generally speaking, you're right around seven-hundred thousand in staffing costs for street maintenance, which is overall street maintenance, not just snow removal. We can look through the snow events and then get the hours worked and, and work it from there as far as numbers are concerned.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Persons, you were talking about just saying, the employees like to keep busy. Well, this morning, I encountered six snow drivers, they were plowing, and I stopped and I was talking to them, and they were taking a very small break, obviously, after, you know, doing the roads one way or another, and they said they started working at two o'clock last night. You know what, that's one thing that the, the public doesn't quite realize, they think everybody just starts at like your normal schedule, eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning after having breakfast. They're out at two o'clock. And you know what, I got to say, I can't use individual names because it would be unfair, because I would not be able to take everyone into consideration, but you know, they were still in a good mood, which means that they like doing what they're doing, being happy and busy. And I think they like working with that particular department. But they're very cheerful after eight hours of driving a twenty-five-thousand-ton truck, you know, in the, late in the night in the cold. But it was just a testimony to how efficient and how, how thoughtful they are and what they care about their jobs. Thank you.
As Alan shared with me last year, the men.
As Alan shared with me, uh, last year, the, the men find it very rewarding for a while, but last year it wasn't rewarding near the end. It was a, it was a, uh, exhausting time for the guys and they, but still, they do a wonderful job for us.
Like, last year, after almost five feet of snow in, in total over a period of time, we hit March and we thought we were finally there, and we got another fourteen inches of snow. And really, I guarantee you this time, you know, well, last year during March, the guys were, were pretty well done with the winter season. I think we were all done with the winter season by that time too as well. Trusty Rassidge brings up a great point too as well, and it mentions it on the slide. The employees, uh, while they are typically here during the day and have a regular daytime schedule, um, we do set out a schedule where we break all the employees, public, and streets and water and sewer into two different groups, and that the employees know ahead of time before they start the season as to what week they'll be on days and one week they'll be on nights. If there isn't a snow event, then they're on days. But if there is a snow event based on their schedule, they will shift to the night shift, and then that'll continue. They'll stay on the night shift until we get back into a normal time where we don't have snow or snow response, and then they go back on the day shift. I can tell you that that is challenging to do that, to send someone home and say, "Go home and sleep for eight hours at five o'clock at night and come back at midnight." Um, but the guys, they do a, a very good job at it, and it's a benefit to the community again that, that when they shift the schedules, keep in mind that that first eight hours is a regular eight hours worth of pay, and anything above that is overtime. So they understand and they dedicate, uh, their time, understanding that they will be in that shift schedule mode in the wintertime. It's gonna be an inconvenience and it's gonna be challenging. So enough about snow, 'cause we're done with winter. It's gonna be like forty degrees on Sunday.
Yeah.
Here's hoping. Uh, tech, technology is one of the huge things. I'll only pause for a minute here. Um, on the right, you can see, uh, Mr. Threwit is, uh, measuring a sidewalk. Uh, one of the plan, or one of the, uh, items that the village has on the laundry list of things to do is to inventory every sidewalk within the community. Now, we estimate that there's over two hundred miles of sidewalk within the community. I'll know by September, October, once we get it all charted within the GIS system. But as, as per the ADA, ADA guidelines, uh, the village should have an inventory of all the sidewalks to gauge ADA compliance and then have a long-term plan to bring the village within ADA compliance. In the old way to do this, you would actually take a clipboard and you would fill out a sheet of paper for every intersection, and you would note the type of ramps, the type of tactile warning devices and things like that that you'd have at the intersection. It was very labor-intensive, and you had to really trust the individuals that did the work. In the, uh, tech, with technology today and the tablets and the help through, uh, with Mr. Kazankow too as well, the tablets actually have GPS devices where you go out, you take a picture of the location, you make a note of the location, and it has a compass on there on your southwest, east-west corner, and that, um, we are hoping to hire two new summer interns just for the summer to go out and walk, and we'll need people who really wanna walk because it will be literally two hundred miles, um, and gave, gather this data. The neat, neat part about it is, once it's uploaded into the tablet, it automatically sends a signal, plots, uh, the information on the GIS system here within the village hall, and then Andrew can go ahead and make some adjustments or additions or updates and things like that. Um, it really is neat and it streamlines, and we, we believe this is the, the right time to take on this challenge. So part of the budget, and I'll get that towards the end, is when you see this bump up in salaries and wages, it's actually for part-time employees, uh, for the summer, and, and actually we'll be looking for, this is a, a blatant commercial, uh, for summer engineering interns. We need four individuals, uh, who are pursuing, preferably pursuing an engineering degree and would like that experience with the Village of Plainfield, and we'll even pay you for it too as well. So that's the commercial too as well. The meter reading I had talked about before, we can read all the meters within the entire, entire community within a day, gets automatically downloaded, the bills get printed, um, you know, thirteen, fourteen thousand accounts. Uh, there is very little labor that's involved in that. This is an org chart, same org chart that we had last year. We're not, uh, we're not proposing any changes in the organizational chart, um, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on that, and, uh, we can talk about it at a future date when we have another meeting or if we have any questions, it'd be fine. These are just some of the things I'll go through as far as, uh, the employees. Uh, one of the great benefits in the Village of Plainfield is we have some very highly qualified employees. Trusty Rassidge spoke to the dedication. Um, I'll speak to their, uh, to their experience and their education as well. Um, we have eight graduates of the Illinois Public Service Leadership Program. You have three certified arborists. Typically, in a community of our size, you'd be lucky to have one. You have four Class A water operators. Uh, typically, you would only have one or less. We have a Class C plant, so A is actually above and beyond. That's the highest, uh, water treatment facility that you could have in Illinois. We have four people that could be in responsible charge of that facility and manage it. Three Class One operators, you're only required to have one. We have three, uh, ASE certified mechanics. One of our mechanics is actually an instructor at Joliet Junior College, um, and has a degree too as well. So very impressed, hard-working mechanic and, uh, does a great job for the village. Uh, two individuals that are certified to repair the streetlights out there, uh, two instructors that are certified by IDIOT to, uh, train for workzone safety and flagger certification. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Threwit, our professional engineer that is also certified in bridge inspection, so we're very proud, um, and he saves us a tremendous amount of money with that too as well. Uh, all the individuals are endorsed to operate heavy equipment, have the CDL driver's license that are, are required, and, uh, all employees participate in continuing education too as well. I wanted, before I talk about and, and end with contractual services versus employees, I wanted to give a little brief update as far as the maintenance is concerned in, in downtown Lockport. And I don't mean for this to be destroyed it because it is related to public works overall. Um, the, the downtown, and we talked earlier a little bit about the downtown, uh, has, was completed a little over eight years ago in that range. Um, it has shown some signs of wear in certain areas. You can see on the left-hand picture is actually the downtown, uh, displaying slash Lockport Street, uh, Plainfield Brick Pavers after it was completed. And, uh, this is, uh, other picture to the right is a little further south. This is actually, all right, I'm sorry, a little further west. This is near Fox River, where the curb is starting to deteriorate, an area where, uh, we believe salt has been trapped, and, and it's just in need of some attention. So there are a couple of things along Lockport Street that we see as needing attention and needing a little refresh, and it's not a, um, an item that's gonna cost a tremendous amount of money, but we wanted to give the public a little update as far as some of the things that are, we are planning to, uh, proceed with downtown. One is the, uh, sand blasting and repainting of all, all the flower pots that are downtown, the large black flower pots downtown. Um, they needed a gum removal for the entire area, and you, you know, this is one of those things that you really don't notice. You, you tend to overlook it after you've been down there a long time, but there, we didn't count how many places that there are gum on the sidewalk. We have a contractor that can remove gum without damaging the con- concrete. Pretty impressive process. Take about a week long. It has to be well above freezing, so it's not gonna occur until we get into next month or the month after. Concrete replacement, you can see this section of curving. It's not that extensive, but there are some areas that need concrete that needs to be replaced. Uh, the replacement of some of the banners downtown, uh, pretty up the downtown. Um, some of the banners are even older than the, than the reconstruction of Lockport. We carried them over from years ago. The cleaning of the streetlights, just the globes themselves, it makes a huge difference when the, and our employees can take on that task if they have the time to do it, but, um, it's time-consuming, but just cleaning the globes makes a huge difference, and then cleaning the streetlights too as well. Power washing all the walkways and brick pavers after the pavers are reset, after the concrete's reset too as well. And last but not least, uh, later in the, in the summer, late in the summer, sealing all of the concrete and all of the brick pavers with a proper sealant. They call it a densifier that'll prevent the salt from penetrating into the concrete and causing problems in the future. So we believe that the refresh and even the park benches, you know, cleaning those up and things like that will not only pretty up the downtown and it's needed right now, but also extend the life of the concrete that's down there and prevent, if we delay this for another five years or ten years or so, it'll be an extensive concrete removal project. To get the concrete properly cleaned and then sealed is an important item. So this is one of those items that's, we're planning to bring forward this spring, um, and we'll keep the board apprised to that as well.
After having spent seven million dollars to, uh, re, to make the improvements downtown, um, we thought it best to make sure we keep on top of these things. You make the repairs when they're small and the bill seems, i- it's smaller. It doesn't seem like a small bill. We are talking about a couple, three hundred thousand dollars to get all the different things done that we're talking about. But again, if you think about it, um, uh, large retail centers actually do require their, uh, properties to get a refresh every five to seven years for these very reasons. Uh, you begin to look just a little tattered, and if you put the investment in when it's just a little tattered, uh, it has a way of refreshing and keeping quite a while. So, uh, this is a very smart and strategic move by Alan and, uh, engineering and Pat to get this underway, so, um, good move.
The, uh, moving a little bit back into the operations, we're almost done here too as well. Um, just to talk about ash trees, it's gonna continue to be a challenge. We're just about at the halfway mark as far as the tree removal is concerned. Uh, last year we did contract out, which we have in the past four years, uh, tree removal. The contractor, the contract and contractor actually removed about two hundred and fifty trees. The village staff removed six hundred and fifty trees. Now, that being said, we had the contractor focus on the largest trees that had the greatest problem, and that we'll continue that process until the trees, ash trees are eliminated, um, ultimately, and as they show signs of dying, uh, and, and are dead too as well, um, we'll remove those trees promptly. Uh, you can see that this past year, we're a little bit over nine hundred trees that were rem- removed. Approximately a thousand trees have been removed the year before, but, um, we're starting a little uptick in the new tree replacement. We actually did a spring planting and a fall planting. And I'll keep the board apprised, we're having some challenges at the consortium finding good quality parkway trees, and, um, this'll continue to be a challenge in the future, um, and I'll keep the board apprised. I mean, there's always the likelihood that the consortium, uh, makes a, uh, a pitch basically to the group to say that we can't find anything that's acceptable in Illinois and we may have to look elsewhere, whether that's Iowa or Wisconsin or Missouri or something like that, and we'll have to evaluate the price related to that too as well. But it, it is, it is taxing the nurseries within the area, that's for sure.
I'm getting teased here that I'm the person who singularly brought that bug here as though I had nothing else to do with my time. Uh, but that being said, joking aside, um, Alan's absolutely right. Finding trees is going to be a very big issue, uh, because we aren't the only town that's, uh, facing this. It's, it's every town out there, and as developers begin to come back onto the marketplace, as we're saying, we, you know, it's slight uptick, still you're, you, you now have developers that are also looking to buy trees and the like. Uh, sadly, my experience from Michigan was we had to actually had, uh, to go to Ohio and have trees tri- shipped in from Ohio, uh, to meet our need. They're terribly expensive way of doing business, but, uh, it's, it's a practice that we very well might likely end up seeing here, so going to Iowa or going to Wisconsin or other places, uh, is a distinct possibility.
Should we have a discussion perhaps on starting our own nursery? I know the Park District has a nursery, the School District has a nursery.
Yeah, I've seen that work reasonably well in some other communities. Uh, that being said as well, it's, it's, it'll take a few years for us to, to build up to where we would have them. There also is then-
Might be worth exploring.
It i- it is. Uh, it also is time-consuming, though. We'd have to have, uh, staff that would be dedicated to doing that. Uh, it's worth exploring, certainly, uh, but there are some challenges to that. Yeah.
I agree.
We'll happy to look into that for, too.
Definitely can, uh, take a look into that too as well. Before I leave this slide, uh, many of you will recognize this picture. The, uh, tree, the picture doesn't look that large, but if you look at the tree in comparison to the two-story house that's next door, this is actually on Illinois Street, basically across the street from the library or the library parking lot. This is, uh, what we believe to be, well, it's hard to tell in the parks, but we believe to be the oldest ash tree within the village. It was taken down this summer. Um, we believe it to be about a hundred and thirty years old. The diameter of the trunk was over four foot wide, um, just a huge tree. And of course, that tree was contracted out. We don't have the equipment, but again, back to the snow removal discussion too as well, would it make sense for the village to buy hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of equipment to take down a few large trees? This is an item that we, uh, had chosen to contract out, and, uh, it's worked very well for us. The, uh, vehicle and equipment, and we did touch on this last time. I didn't bring, well, I do have the worksheet with me of all the vehicles that the village has, their age. Um, we do look at it in a little more holistic way on this slide here as far as how old, uh, some of these items are. I thank the board for approving the larger truck. Uh, this was a couple of meetings ago, which is actually a replacement for one of the older trucks, um, and that was anticipated within the budget too as well. We would anticipate in the coming year's budget, since we have another vehicle, another older truck that's actually twenty years old, and that is really pushing the life expectancy within the, uh, for, for most communities that we would like to replace. Um, so there is sufficient funds within the proposed budget right now, uh, for that, and I know that it, this was a previous, either last year or the year before, the board had pledged, uh, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year to keep up with the vehicle replacement program, so we wouldn't be hit with a huge, uh, big-ticket item three, four, or five years from now. So that was included in the last two years budgets. It's included in this year's budget too as well. So there'd be one larger truck and some others.
Can I ask a question on this? Do you record the hours that the trucks are used?
Yes.
And the mileage?
Yes, the hours and the mileage too as well. So at about twenty years, you know, it's about seventy, eighty thousand miles that you'll get out of a large truck, um, which I know the police department puts many, many more miles on it, but you think about the miles on those larger trucks at eighty thousand, it's, it really is pushing the, the limits, uh, too as well. The, uh, street department history here, and I'll let, uh, Tracy jump in and, uh, answer any questions if, uh, she would like. It, it does show, uh, the different items and the, and the board actually has within the budget some of the, some more detail that is related to that. You can see, I'll pick out a couple of the items that, uh, blue line with the X through it in the center is contractual services, and you can see from two thousand and eleven was probably a relatively average year for snow removal, tree removal, things of that nature. Two thousand and thirteen was a, a pretty mild year. This is the two thousand and twelve, thirteen winter season. Pretty mild year. Two thousand and thirteen, fourteen was a brutal winter year for us, and you can see the spike in contractual services. This year, we ratcheted that down a little bit anticipating a, a normal winter, and it's actually ratcheted down even a little bit more in contractual services for snow removal, anticipating that we would return to a normal winter again and catch up with the salt purchase. Uh, so that's what we're anticipating here. The, uh, wages and salaries you can see are, have pretty well stabilized. We're talking about a couple of additional part-time seasonal positions, uh, within that line item, and then all the other supplies and things of that nature are pretty, pretty consistent from the last several years.
Right, and I can dovetail a little bit on the, the budget itself. Uh, overall, the budget's increasing about one point eight percent, so just under two percent, and Alan spoke directly to the expenses that we're watching still. And I will say right now, if there are any changes in any of these line items, it would be prior to the approval of the budget, we will inform the board. Um, specifically contractual services is the one that we're watching really closely. Um, that line item is on the street maintenance program, which is page three, and you'll know, and you've experienced last fiscal year, well, the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, contractual snow removal was over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of expenditures. The two prior years were under a hundred thousand, so it's obviously, um, a snow season that was not normal. Uh, it's hard to anticipate today how the rest of the few months will be. Um, we're hopeful that it'll be a, a more normal snow season. We're going to look at this line item closely in the next few weeks. Should we adjust it, we will inform the board as such. Um, at this point- At this point, we're, we're staying with a conservative, a little, I would say, higher-than-average norm, but enough to have the budget covered in case the snow events get extreme as we've seen before, it's hard to predict today. But overall, in the division with no additional new full-time employees, just the couple part-timers that we had discussed, just over a two percent increase, or under a two percent increase from the current budget that we're working on today, we are running on budget, actually a little under budget as it relates to expenses right now, so that's a good thing. And any adjustments within the line items that we see are really trying to estimate where we're at today for the rest of the fiscal year. They seem to trend pretty straightforward from year to year, so no major adjustments that we see in the document. But I'd be happy to answer any questions as it relates to the Streets Division budget, it's just over three point four million in total.
Very comprehensive review, I think it's a, I hope a lot of people are watching on TV because you covered an awful lot of things that are done that the public certainly doesn't know about and you're all doing very well and kind of behind the scenes, so you do a lot of things for the amount of money you get from us and provide a lot of services and very efficiently at that, so. Since there's no real change in the budget, that means you continue to do as well as you've been doing, except as we see, you know, what's going to happen the next few months, but.
We do have, um, thank you for that and the, the guys do a great job and they take a lot of pride in their work too as well and I swear this is my last slide, I swear. I, we already went through all the items that are within the budget, but let me, or within this slide here, but let me touch on the last bullet item too as well. When we look at staffing levels, which is one of the items that we talked about as part of the strategic plan, and I'll, I'll say this before the other departments make their presentation, that you'll find that one size does not fit all and that this application may not fit in other departments too as well, that you have certain positions and expertise that require either certification levels, experience, confidentiality, things like that, so it, this is not to imply that this fits for all other departments, but I wanted to put this out here too as well, as we look at next year and meeting the service levels of the community out here, Route fifty-nine is, is one of those items that we struggle with as far as maintaining and that during the middle of the summer when we're fully staffed, it seems to flow relative, relatively well. Now, it's, we use a little different equipment and we have to be selective on the individuals that utilize the equipment within that environment with all the traffic and moving from island to island and all the other things out there. So, we have talked in the previous year about potentially contracting out the mowing, the weed removal, the treatment of the trees, the treatment of the plantings, the, and, and all the maintenance that's related to the landscaping on Route fifty-nine and it's not only the boulevard sections, but also either side of the roadway too as well, so the entire right-of-way. It spans approximately seven miles and it's hard to believe that it's that long, but it spans seven miles within the Village of Plainfield and you've got some unique planting areas, including the viaduct, which really take a lot of time and energy to, to cover this. So, Mr. Miller has talked to a couple of different contractors to get an idea as to what it would cost to contract the service out. We believe that it'd cost somewhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars in that range to contract that out. Now, with that, that would be a mowing every week, it would be weed treatment, treatment of the planting beds, including the woodchips and things like that, the viaduct as well, the entry monuments that we have, so it would be all-inclusive to cover all those things and that would free up the public works staff to focus on street lighting and trees and things of that nature that really seem to draw our attention away and would help the department operate more efficiently. Now, I'll end with this, not that we have to do it the way everyone else does it, but both Shorewood and Joliet contract out the work along Route fifty-nine. And so, it was easy to get a price and if the board wants to follow this direction, we will, we will solicit sealed bids and have sealed, sealed bidding process, bring that back to the board for approval, but it would be the contract for the, the year and that's what staff would propose, is that we contract out, if the board's comfortable with this, the summer maintenance of Route fifty-nine and all the improvements along Route fifty-nine and try it for this year and see how the public likes it and see how the board likes it and see how well it works with the department.
Alan?
Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any say in the matter?
Yes. Well, you actually have all the say in the matter.
No, no, I mean, the village versus the state of Illinois.
Oh, no, we signed a contract with the state of Illinois when they widened Route fifty-nine that we would maintain all of fifty-nine throughout our community, so it is a project that we are responsible for maintaining.
Does it have a shelf life?
That's a good question.
Yeah, unfortunately, and if, if-
I mean, that, that, the reason I bring it up, it seems to me that the state should be at least maintaining or exploring contractive services, not the village.
And we can propose that question, our, the response has been in the past is that IDOT will maintain Route fifty-nine at the regular frequency that they maintain their other state roadways. And as time has gone by, this is just my observation, and the state budget has been tighter, if you think about Route thirty west of town, how often does a right-of-way get mowed? Maybe once or twice a year, so that would be the frequency of attention that Route fifty-nine would get. And it just seems to be, with all the work that was put into the landscaping to let it go to that point.
Remember when, I remember when there were hearings here with IDOT and presentations and I brought up the medians and the parkways and the maintenance, maybe we should have thought differently about it.
Yeah, this, you know, the state, they carry a lot of weight as far as what's done and that's standard policy for all the communities. And you can see, Naperville's treated this in a couple of different ways during a couple of different seasons and it's pretty obvious as to the way it was treated and I mean, no disrespect to Naperville.
Things that aesthetically impact the town, we probably ought to try to control ourselves. IDOT, because of their budgeting problems, is not likely to be very efficient at it. I'd far rather get grants from IDOT, not waste our money doing things that we can do probably better than they can and continue to get significant grants so that we can actually do the roads. We don't have that kind of money, but the labor. The other thing I'd suggest on the, on the contracting is maybe in a workshop, come in and show the pros and cons of either the snow contracts or the landscaping, that type thing, I, I think it's educational to go through the analysis, if you will, and workshop is probably a good time to educate the board.
We can do that.
It really is- Cost-benefit situation type thing and, you know, it's a judgment, want to make the judgment, we need to probably have a better handle of the numbers.
Yeah, we, we can provide some additional numbers for you on it. Generally speaking though, to the point that Mr. Persons was making, when we first looked at this, we were looking at the possibility of needing two additional staff just for that lawn maintenance and, and spring maintenance and, and fall maintenance projects. And then came the question of needing the additional equipment so that we could actually have them out there doing that. The numbers that Mr. Miller was able to get, just on the back of the envelope, suggested that there'd be a much more responsive way for us to look at this and certainly something worth exploring, even on an interim basis, as Mr. Persons was suggesting, that it's something we could give a go this year even, in this particular budget year, but again, we'll follow up with additional numbers for you.
Yeah, the company's been doing this for a long time, taking services they used to provide in-house, provide, you know, full staff and full benefits and all that and, you know, DuPont over the years discovered, it doesn't pay. It's much better with somebody who specializes in it, you can bring them in and out when you need it, they cover the costs of it.
Did you work at DuPont? Did you work at DuPont?
At one time, yeah.
I didn't know that.
I wasn't there when they started the company though, contrary to what you might believe.
Contrary, contrary to what Jim says, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it is a commoditized service, so it is rather easy to be able to show the numbers.
I would encourage us to take a serious look at that because it has a lot of benefits and when you need the skills in-house, you know, things that other people can't do, that's, that's when you want to make sure you have your own people for it.
We'd be happy to, we can have those numbers together before, as part of the next committee of the whole, so that-
That's useful, I think, yeah.
You know, speaking of in-house, recently I spoke with former village administrator Terry Burghart and we were talking about public works and he was talking about Alan and he said he can remember when Alan came to the Village of Plainfield, the public works had one shovel, a rake, and pickup truck, wheelbarrow, and look where you guys have gone. Well, you know, you look at that report and I'm just being obviously facetious, you know, the whole idea, the growth and the control and just a good service that we received. And your report this evening was very comprehensive and as always, the people that are in your department and the people who help you with all of your, providing all the services do a marvelous job and it's really, I know it's appreciated not only by this board, but by our entire staff and I believe the community also, and thank you all and please transmit that message to your men and women.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick word, Alan, great presentation. Obviously, you've done a lot of homework on balancing out contracting with, as far as the snow removal and doing some in-house, making sure our vehicles are being utilized. And it looks like you have the right threshold and I definitely agree with the presentation, how you've been doing the snow removal as far as Route fifty-nine. I'd be curious, really exactly what, what the price would be, I know you said it was around forty thousand dollars, Brian?
Thirty, forty.
Thirty to forty thousand dollars. And I know one of the internal struggles that any municipality has is that when you go to contract something out, we obviously have to file the prevailing wage act, which does actually sometimes cost us more money to hire somebody to perform a job than it would if it was done in the private sector. And I'm sure that's taken into consideration on these bids, so in the end, I am open to experimenting and seeing exactly what the price is going to be and just make sure that the vendors are made aware of, you know, our culture at the village and the expectation of the quality of work and make sure, you know, they represent the village when they're actually performing that work, so be happy to go either way, whether it's in-house or out. Thank you.
Paul, any last comments?
I do have one comment. I'd like to thank and acknowledge Eric Miller and Mark Stoffko. Our pipes froze at the Riverfront Building last week and they came out there and cut the wall out and prevented it from exploding, so I'm very grateful to them.
Okay, thank you for that too.
I appreciate that, I'll, and I think I mentioned it once before-
Your purple red-
And, and Bill's going to make a comment, we're at one percent water loss and it's unbelievable, you know, I, I, I didn't know if we could achieve less than four and we're down to one and it's, the numbers are amazing and make sure to pat Mr. Stoffko on the back and thank him for all the hundreds, if not thousands of dollars that he saves the community in keeping track of the water loss.
Well, thank you everybody for the feedback tonight, we'll come back, the next committee of the whole will have the numbers that back up the conversation for tonight so that you can have some more information as you deliberate. And the next committee of the whole meeting is Management Services, Planning and Building, so we'll be able to as well have those details for you at that meeting. With that, thank you very much.
Reminders?
Wednesday, January fourteenth is coffee with the mayor at nine AM here. January nineteenth, village offices are closed in observance of Martin Luther King Day. January twentieth, Plan Commission will be at seven PM. And January twenty-sixth is our next Committee of the Whole workshop. Motion to adjourn.
So, I'm up.
Second? Been made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.
You guys run the state, no sex, hey.